Six thirty-one, call meeting to order. Can I get approval of the agenda that may be amended? And before we make a motion, we receive for a warrant by the Board of Selectmen to the Collector of Taxes, which is the Town Manager for the Route Four Sewer Assessment. So every year we're supposed to.
Oh, we'll approve of the agenda first.
Yeah, right, right. So I'm adding that to the agenda.
Oh, okay.
So we'll put that at number five and then everything else will move down one.
Yep.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes, I don't see any minutes.
I don't see any minutes.
Any minutes here, so there are no minutes. We're caught up on. It's okay, that's just something that's always the same. They always put that in there. So Select Board member comments or concerns?
What happened to the lights at the bottom of the road and the sign?
Oh, good question.
So Green Mountain Power, Susan, has been telling VHB and Markowski that every single time one of them comes to remove one of the wires up above, they have to disconnect power lights that go over the riser and then reconnect it back. And then people are showing up and then not, but. So we disconnected it last week and they're starting to get moved over. Consolidated or EV fiber, whatever, one of them was out there today.
So it's intentional that it's down?
Why can't we have our stuff powered up?
Because we're on the old telephone pole.
Yeah.
The riser for the power to the box comes off of the phone pole that has to be removed.
Yeah.
And everything's coming over. And the people, as long as, so Remount Power came over first and moved everything over to the other side. No one will work on the old poles if there's power over there. So.
They work on them all the time when there's power on them.
They're not moving them over if there's power.
So why didn't we move our power over first?
We're gonna find that out tomorrow. There's a meeting with VHB and Markowski.
Okay.
We have our every other week meeting and also we're gonna find out.
You can have your present for this?
Um, we'd have to warn it.
Warn it?
Okay.
I'm like, I am very concerned with what's going on because that's pretty sloppy.
Yeah.
Okay? That, you know, this town, the business district, you know, we pushed for the sign down there and everything lit and we go into a holiday weekend and it's pitch black.
Right.
And you could have put, they, not seeing you. They could have put the new service in and then reconnected it so there's no stoppage of service. I just went through this at my house with Green Mountain Power.
Right. So Susan called me like two weeks ago, has been going back and forth, back and forth with trying to get, nobody knew. There's who's supposed to pay for the power to go over. Markowski says in the contract says they're just supposed to put the conduit in and then we're supposed to drag the power through, but there is a meeting tomorrow with VHB to say what's going on. So decided two weeks ago to say, when you know they're finally gonna come in here, pull the power. So we can get it done and it's not like they come here, the power's not done. So tomorrow we have a meeting and, you know, and we wanna say if it's, I mean, I think we're getting into like something of a contract or whatever because, you know, the project was supposed to, and so this is not anything that could be done in this part that I'm gonna say executive session, but, you know, they were supposed to be done with the project by the time the school started.
Yeah. Well, that was my next comment is, Markowski, while yes, they've sub parts out.
Yeah.
They are, we've had beautiful sunny days where no one's out there working on things. We finally got the traffic pattern corrected a little bit.
Yeah.
But it's like, we just went through a great holiday period. Cause I'm looking at it right now, it's October fifteenth.
Yeah.
And the way they're going, we're not gonna get finished.
Yeah.
And the only thing that has to be done is really just that cobblestone trail?
No, no, no. Cobble, the cobblestone, but then those telephone poles on the east side have to come off. They have to come out.
Okay.
Okay? The finished grading has to be done on the east side.
Okay.
So the opposite side of here is the east, okay? So that has to be all finished out there. The line striping has to get done. They were supposed to do it, it was supposed to be done a while ago, but it was supposed to be scheduled for today, but with the rain and the cold weather, and here we get back to where Chris and I know, like, if you lay down paint underneath forty-degree weather for, you know, and now we get some cold weather days or whatever. It's a mixture between VHB and Markowski and we know both, VHB is some of the stuff on this also because of the wind lanes and everything.
I understand the power situation in terms of we would have to pay for that and that's not on Green Mountain Power, but the reality is we could have put that in prior to just cutting our power off.
Right. They weren't doing it, they weren't doing it, so.
Well, we have to hire a contractor to do it.
They're supposed to put the conduit in and now it's up to who's supposed to put. So it's a subcontract, so VHB is supposed to be overseeing the project for us. Even if it has to be done by our electricians, it should be in that contract that someone is supposed to put in the electrical. We're gonna be talking about who's supposed to do it. VHB is supposed to prove tomorrow that it was in the contract.
VHB's gonna be there.
It's Evan and Rosie that usually show up. So that's what we're dealing with, but I believe it does. I have to look, Chris. There's like three meetings tomorrow for different, there's also with the Casella meeting or whatever too, but hold on one second. Today, tomorrow. Eleven AM.
Okay. Can we, can we warrant it that I'll be there?
Well, just warn it as a meeting. Once you get there, you'll just do, it's an emergency meeting that you came in on.
That's fine. Yeah. Business-wise for the, the road, it's just, it's not a good look. I mean, how great is it that we could advertise gondola rides on the sign down there and we can't, it's pitch black?
Well, we're not supposed to do that. It's, it's the town side, we're not supposed to say for other people's businesses. I get it, but Michael Ramsey handed that thing over to the chamber at some point, so I'm letting it go for now, but that is supposed to be a town side.
So that's who does that?
That's not supposed to be for.
Well, we can put.
KPAA, that messaging?
They're supposed to do the messaging based on what the town has approved to be put up and what the town puts up is like town events and stuff. We do put World Cup up, we do put Spartan Race up, we do do certain things, but we're not supposed to be putting up there like gondola rides. We're really not supposed to be putting up the Chippin Cowboy event or whatever. We're not supposed to. I'm just telling you what the.
And I, and I understand the rules probably better than Teresa understands them, but the truth of the matter is, is that it's black right now.
I'll agree with that.
So their marketing is really good because it's black.
Yeah, I hear that. But then on the other hand, if it wasn't black, then one of, one of the companies wouldn't be in there today taking down a power line and will be there until December or January.
We just don't agree with the plan, we just don't know why it was the plan, right?
Right, yeah.
So I just wanna be present as a, as a voice of another select person concerned about the business wise.
Okay. So, I mean, we don't even have to one, we're just, when we show up tomorrow, emergency meetings can be announced after the fact. And now, and now that we're on video anyway, if anyone wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
You know, so.
So it's eleven o'clock?
Eleven AM, it's here.
Great.
There's, should be a Zoom link too, if you want a Zoom link. So.
Good.
Okay.
Thanks.
So next up is five, we switched over to the sewer. Tom?
Yeah. So this is an annual thing where we simply have to send out bills to the people on the Killington Road and Route Four Sewer.
Yeah, can I see the document with the customers? So last year we were nine hundred and forty-two and now she has the attachment of the names.
Yeah. I think this year it's nine thirty-five, which I don't think it changed.
Can you put all the names and collect them?
This is the bill that goes out, there's only like fifty different people on it or whatever, so.
I think this is it.
There you go. So the Route Four Sewer twenty-four, twenty-five, there's a hundred and forty-seven point five hooked up ERUs at this point.
Okay.
Last year was a hundred and forty-two. The rate's nine hundred and thirty-five dollars per ERU.
Okay.
So we're gonna make a motion.
Yep.
To allow the Town Manager to move forward with the warrant for, warrant for Route Four Sewer at nine hundred and thirty-five dollars per ERU. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's just sign it. Emergency department reports, August and September, starting off first with the Fire Department, and we have both Fire and Police here, so.
So last one, we had twenty fire, seventeen EMS, two both. At this time, two hundred and fifty-nine calls. As of twenty twenty-three, well, twenty twenty-three at the same time, we had, they had three hundred and one calls. Notable incidents, better uptake of propane incidents, our smell of gas, responded to two mutual aid incidents with the tanker to assist with moving water. For training updates, I've got three members just finishing up the advanced class. One member's starting on EMT class, then five members in the Woodstock firefighter one-two program. In-house training for the August was three hundred and thirty-two hours. Rescued two still out of service indefinitely. Nothing with station updates, personnel updates, current roster's at thirty-eight. Thirteen firefighter two, seven firefighter one. I have fifteen V, for medical wise, I have fifteen Vefers, ten EMTs, four advanced EMTs and two paramedics on staff.
That's what I was gonna, so when you have down here the personal updates?
Yep.
And you have current roster at thirty-eight?
Yes.
And it says like dash thirteen FF dash two?
Yes.
What does that mean?
Uh, so the way it works, there's firefighter one, which is your basically incoming firefighters. Firefighter two gives you a little more in-depth of training of like vehicle education and such.
So the thirty-eight is the total roster, but out of the thirteen?
Thirteen are firefighter two and seven are firefighters.
Right, a one, okay, good enough, makes sense now.
What are the other eighteen?
They're just volunteers, they're not firefighter one.
They're just, they're just, well, the other eighteen, I've got, well, let me put it this way, ten more I've got, as of this month, I've got ten that are going to class. Five on the online portion, which is firefighter one out of Pittsburgh, it's online, and then five in Woodstock class. So there's eight, I have eight currently that are not sort of, that are just exterior firefighters.
So they're not allowed to go in, into the fire? But you can still use them for certain things outside of the fire.
Yes, yes. I got one guy that just drives apparatus, so.
Are we gonna make a cap at that? Of how many volunteers are on? Cause I know that becomes an issue with equipment, such as, you know, the SCPA equipment and everything.
So, I mean, right now I've got, I can, I'm trying to figure a cap, I mean, I can cap forty-five, fifty, I know a lot of departments do fifty members, but again, that's.
I'm not asking for, I'm saying, are you looking at it, you're saying?
I, oh, yes, I am looking at it.
Okay, cause I mean, all of a sudden you start getting everybody coming and then it's like, then then you start getting into your calls and you get forty people showing up to a call and it's all, you start running into problems in your budget. So just start taking a look at that.
I would say too, just to note, I think you're.
I've gotta exhaust mine before, I mean, with that, I mean, I've gotta exhaust my people first before I go counting on my mutual aid stuff.
Yeah.
So.
It's a good problem to have.
Yes.
I mean, I look at it and there's thirty-eight and then how many are in KSAR?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, so there's almost sixty, okay? Fifty-nine total between the two. And when this thing first started out, when, you know, say two years ago, I think there was somewhere around thirty that was between, thirty, thirty-five that was between KSAR and the volunteer fire department before it was.
Yeah, since from there. We've, we've seen some nutrition, some have backed off from coming, we've got a couple new ones, we're averaging twenty-one still.
So, next up anyways.
Oh, we just, your notable incident of that particular structure fire, with Hybridge, that was a good one. Could say, like, yeah, it's like between the wood roof of that up there and everything else, like, any other time period, I mean, then you hadn't responded as quickly as you had, any of that one could have gotten away with.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. By the way, so that's a good save.
Great.
Police department. Month of August, I'll do month of August first. Total number of incidents for the month of August is two hundred and thirty-four, hundred and forty-five cases with calls of service of eighty-nine. Year-to-date from last month, from January first twenty-three, sorry, January first twenty-four to eight thirty-one twenty-four was total incidents of one thousand seven hundred and eighteen. Year-to-date twenty-three, it shows an increase was only one thousand one hundred and ninety-one. So it was a nineteen point seven percent increase a year-to-date from last, last month of August from twenty-three. As a note, in the month of July last year, there was three hundred and forty-one calls that came in, mostly that was from the flood and people were inquiring about road conditions and stuff like that. Last month, Officer Delorenzo had finished, completed her field training. She's on the road by herself now, signed off by the Vermont Criminal Justice Training Council, continuing with recruitment and retention planning as well as recruitment of new officers. We continuing directed patrols throughout the different roads in the community with eighty-four traffic stops last month. Currently twenty-one KSAR members, active trainings and meetings, and also including trainings with the state coordinator, SAR coordinator Drew Kleimer, both classroom and scenario-based training. This past month, month of September, two thousand twenty-four, we had two hundred and ninety-two incidents with a hundred and thirty-one cases and calls of service of a hundred and sixty-one compared to two thousand twenty-three, had a hundred and seventy with sixty-nine cases and a hundred and one calls for service. So two thousand twenty-four shows a seventy-two percent increase in the month of September compared to twenty-three. Year-to-date in twenty-four, from the first of the year till end of September is two thousand and eleven total incidences compared to last year of two thousand and nine. So two thousand twenty-four showed a twenty-six point five case increase year-to-date compared to twenty-three. We have two current applicants, which goes on about our kind of recruitment efforts. One's looking for part-time work, one's looking for full-time work. Again, Officer Delorenzo has been on her own now for about a month and she's doing great. Directed patrol is continuing, we had an arrest on a warrant over at Sunrise, contractor there had an arrest warrant out of New Hampshire, which we located him. Again, KSAR is doing well, we had two activations, one at Deer Leap for two lost, missing, lost hikers. And then over the weekend, we had a medical incident, we were assisting Killington Rescue with a hiker up top of Pico there. And both activations, team members did great, we had good response from membership as well as good response from the state coordinator from the one at Deer Leap. And trainings are continuing, we do another scenario-based training coming up this week with our SAR members and that's, that's going well. We have some new interest as well. Some SAR members have kind of backed off as well as new members are continuously to request to join.
So incidents are everything, right?
Yeah, so total incidents would be everything. Cases are what's generated. The calls for service that comes into our phone. Which sometimes lead to incident, which sometimes lead to cases and cases are just generated through dispatch normally or a car crash and stuff like that.
So we got down below the big round circle breaking out and that's the incidences?
Yes, yep, that does not include the calls.
Does that include KSAR or no?
No.
Okay.
We don't, no.
Just the police department?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you got out of that, some of them will turn into cases.
Correct, exactly.
Okay, and then calls for service are?
Those are calls that come into our phone.
From?
From citizens, from, you know, from vacationers.
So like the one thousand one hundred and fifteen calls for services, are they included into the total incidents of two thousand and eleven?
Calls for service would be include, yes, would be a total of the cases and calls for service.
Okay. And the difference might be state police?
State police numbers aren't included in this.
Okay.
These are just Killington police.
Okay, all right. Do you guys have any questions?
I could, I could pull state police to at some point if you guys want to show what they're doing.
I was just trying to understand like how, if they call in, eleven hundred and fifteen, and then if there's total incidences, I mean, is that because some of them are traffic tickets or there's no calling on a traffic ticket, I would guess, right?
Yeah, so cases could be.
My case is total incidents.
It would be both.
Okay. Total incidents are, are calls in and then?
And cases generated.
And cases generated for just being on the road.
Yes.
Okay. That's why I'm just trying to understand it so we keep on moving, cause this is like the second month that we're doing this.
Yes, it's good.
So, okay, I don't have any other questions there.
No, none.
The next one up, Tom, is approved grant list, personal property deletion request, and that's from the listers.
Yeah, I think this was in the board's packet. They just made a clerical error and they put in personal property for a business entitled Huntington Technologies. If you guys approve this, it will remove a hundred, three dollars and twenty cents from the grant list.
I think we did this last year also, the same one.
Same company?
Huntington Technologies or whatever, yeah, Huntington Technologies. Can I even get a motion to approve Huntington Technologies for a hundred and three dollars and twenty cents from personal property? All in favor?
Aye.
But I think if we look last year, we'll see.
Always the same?
Did the same thing or whatever, they just missed taking it in. Remember?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna stay out of the next one because it's actually me, so.
Okay. I think also included in your board package, packet was a, a letter from the Department of Health, Meg McCarthy, she's a compliance and enforcement advisor. It's pretty much a routine thing, I think. This is, I was gonna see how many years the appointment is for, but anyways, it's for the.
Town Health Officer?
Mm-hmm. And Jim Half is the current Town Health Officer. I think he's willing to do it again.
For three years.
Three years, there it is, yeah.
Okay.
It does, I'm, I'm not talking as a health inspector here, it goes with the zoning administrator.
Okay.
That's.
And as she states in the letter, it's issues associated with water septic mold and public health issues, which it makes sense to do because at least that way, when you're in, whether it's like a, you know, septic inspection or bedroom inspections or whatever, it makes sense. So I make a motion, we move forward with that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hasting.
You have a say.
Yeah.
I need somebody to sign that.
Managers report?
Okay. Six things I've put together on a report. Just to give the board and the public some ideas of what we're doing. We're finally gonna go ahead with VTAL being our only phone service. They're gonna start hopefully on the eleventh of November. They think it'll take maximum a week to finish this. And the good news is by dimming that, we'll be saving twenty-five hundred dollars a month on our phone bill, it's pretty substantial.
Twenty-five hundred a month?
Yeah.
We approved this a couple of months ago and it was five hundred dollars a month.
Oh, really?
Can we hold off a few more months?
I think we would, like you and I saw, I think we're paying for two services.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think, I think, was it New Horizon?
Yeah.
I think it was, I think they were charging twenty-five a month, so.
More? Twenty-five hundred more a month?
Well, no, that was their bill and the detail was like nineteen hundred.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, there's five, six hundred dollars. We, we approved a bunch of months ago to move over to Verizon and it was like a five or six hundred dollar decrease from the Horizons.
Oh, I see.
So this is getting, New Horizons finally off.
Right.
And Verizon on.
Right, right, right. So that's the twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, okay. Plus you have the reduction of between the, two different companies. But we've already paid two of them.
That's been going on for about three years now.
More.
Four?
Really?
Yeah.
There you go.
Wow, okay, well, we should, they told us it was gonna be seamless, so we'll see.
I'm sure.
VTAL's good.
Yeah, they are good.
And they'll will stay and get it right.
Yeah.
And she never moves.
Yeah. Just to let you guys know and the public, if there are, you'll see ads, we've already placed an ad for highway people, new highway person. Had some applicants have done some interviews and we have a person retiring that is the facilities maintenance person. He's retiring at the end of this year, so we're gonna soon start advertising for him as well. So when you see ads out there, it's, we're replacing people.
Okay.
And last, last meeting, we had a report on the restricted fund balances and there was some negative fund balances and those have all been rectified, they're now positive because with the exception of the street signage, that's still a negative balance of seven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. But all the other ones, because the annual amount of money that's supposed to be put in there for every given fiscal year was transferred in, they automatically went up to a positive balance. And we'll report on those in future times, what the exact amounts are. I just wanted to mention that the Town Clerk and the Assistant Treasurer both received additional certifications from the Vermont Municipal Clerks and Treasurers Association. I think Lucretia received the highest certification you can get and Monica just received her first certification as a treasurer.
Great.
Yeah, so it's good to have certified people in that office. On October sixteenth, this Wednesday, I'm gonna have a staff meeting and finally explain what we're gonna do with the vacation thing and, and we'll see how that goes. And lastly, the new pedestrian pathway that we were kinda talking about earlier at the bottom of the Killington Road, we will not be maintaining that with snow and ice wise winter maintenance on a routine basis. Guys just aren't really certain about how to do it just yet and until they really get good at it, there could be times when it's not bare. So we wanted everybody to know that that's the case.
Who makes that decision?
Whether we get it done or not?
Whether we service it or not or retain a pathway.
I think it's gonna be a total staff decision after looking at it and seeing what's happening. And it's also gonna depend upon snow, quantity of snow, cause we don't have much storage space for snow. We probably have about ten feet width of storage space between a fog line and the cobbles, you know, we can plow snow between that fog line on the road and the western side of the cobbles. And, so it's very possible.
Backing up on the philosophical portion of this of who determines we're gonna take care of pathways or not? Who is the person who says we're not gonna plow this anymore or we're not gonna maintain it in the winter?
I could jump in and say that there was a meeting. I could jump in and say that. There was a meeting about a month ago with VHB, one of those first meetings or whatever, going through, and the meeting was called to get here on-site, instead of just like looking at pictures and talking or whatever, and the highway foreman and then his right-hand person, Bob, were here, and they were working through with Evan from VHB, going through how to take care of it, and it cannot be plowed over because of the cobbles on there, and the light line is, the white line will be five feet away from the cobbles, so they'll be able to pretty much stay there, you know, some of the heavy windy ones, but they got five feet, they know, or whatever, from that white line, if the light line stays, let's hope that it's going to get down in good weather here, or whatever, and stay down. But when Tom is saying, then Rosie goes out and gets up into that machine, the blower, and he just starts going, right, whatever. So for him to get down, down this way here, they're saying that they're gonna get the road plowed first, it's the entrance, and then when it clears up, they're gonna then come in with the grader, because then they can control the grader better, and then they can get the snow over and leave like two or three inches of snow on the cobblestones, let it do what it's supposed to do, and then they can get on the sidewalk from there, and then push more there, and then they can come in. So they're not saying that it's not going to be opened at all this year, it's just not going to be open on what we're used to up here as a routine basis.
Yeah.
That could change after a first couple of snowstorms, but I think your question is, is who's deciding that, it's pretty much the road crew is saying, you know, our first thing is to get the road open. They got Rosie up here now doing the sidewalk, that he just hops into that machine and takes care of it.
So that blower can't do the bottom portion?
Can, can.
Yeah.
But then the plow guys are gonna be kicking over too.
Oh, kicking more and more.
That's gonna happen, you know, up and down the road in the future, and it happens to this day, because we also, we have other portions of road where we just happen to have a curb, and then we have cobblestone, and then we have walkway. So they're constantly winging snow always onto that.
Right.
And then they blow it onto the adjacent property. I just feel we've spent millions of dollars here, and to say, we're not gonna maintain that, I don't think that's the job of our town crew. Our town crew's hired to do something that philosophically comes down from the board and the management to make that decision, not them. And I also believe, okay, that, you know, they're not happy about the roundabout. Are they just not gonna plow that too, because they decided not to?
I'm not gonna get in an argument here with you.
I'm not arguing, I'm asking questions.
But you're throwing out, I don't think it's the highway guys, we, you just were told that they're looking for more people to work, okay? I don't know how this is working. I don't think that they're gonna be able to come in, myself, and we've had this discussion, I think this should have been with a curb, but we didn't have three Ds from the engineers, which I think moving forward, if we use them, I would rather see a three D from them. But they're sitting there and they're going through, and number one, even though VHB told us, I've seen pictures of other towns with cobblestones in, and they're, one, one town replaced it with all brick red pavers flat, another town, you could see it, the cobblestones are all, they're missing in places and stuff, and these guys here are saying, yeah, you spent millions of dollars, or two-point-eight million dollars here, give us some time to figure this out. I don't know if it changes in, in period, but let's see how the snowstorms go, but we're gonna come in here, we're gonna plow the road, and then when it's cleared up and we get all our roads done, then we're gonna come in with a front, with a front loader or a grader, and then we're gonna push it from there, and then we're gonna push it, and then we're gonna get the sidewalk open, and as Tom has said, they're not going to have it open like that, like we have up above. Could be a couple of days after a snowstorm.
Yeah, so they agree it's their responsibility, it's just how, right, they're just trying to figure out what the best way to do it is for this winter.
I think that's a better approach than just saying, we're not gonna maintain it.
I didn't say that, I said we weren't gonna maintain it routinely until we know how to do it.
Okay.
So.
Routinely, I just didn't understand routinely.
Yeah, I got it.
That's why we're having a conversation further.
Yeah, 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 to explain that, you know.
We put it in, we wanna get it, but we also don't wanna ruin.
Don't wanna hear the plink-plink, right, you don't wanna hear the stones coming out.
I mean, we knew.
They wanna get it done right.
I understand that, and rightfully so, but it's, it's the same effect that we have up the road in front of the foundry.
Right.
Okay, we're just elevated, okay, that's the only difference. And so there's not plowing up against a curb. I don't like to personally, I don't like the design either, okay, but as Evan was quick to point out, well, it would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars for all the underdrains and permits and the stormwater retention and everything else to go through it, and we don't even know if we could have gotten it in.
I mean, the guys were sitting down there and they were talking to Evan, and also the plants going down, the Killington, when you go down the Killington Road on the east side, and they're like within ten inches of the road, and how are they gonna, how are they gonna last, that's what the guys were asking.
They're not.
And they're told that they're salt resistant, I don't know if they're pushback.
Blade resistant? I don't think they're blade resistant.
Just telling you how the conversation.
Reality check with it, but I, you know, I agree, there's gonna be some challenges, I just don't want us to quit.
Also bollards, the, you know, there's, there's cars that are coming down the road, when there's cars, you've probably seen it, I've seen it twice, when they're backed up.
They shoot across it.
They go across into the ski shack, and the design is just not there, and now all of a sudden, it was like, well, what can we do, and I was like, well, Matt Kinsman sent me an email saying, can you get bollards put in, and then I threw that out to the engineers, and then they come up with something, and Tom was looking, and the first, what did they give us first?
Like four-by-four post. A wooden post.
A wooden post, and so then I just did a search on Google for bollards, and I found a company, and then I Googled it back to, I emailed it back to VHB, and, oh, I've looked into it now, and I like this one or whatever, but now that it's just been given to us a couple of weeks ago, how are we gonna get them in? So...
I'm putting bollards in right now to go around a generator I just installed.
Yeah, but this has to be removable?
Yeah.
Because they have to plow in and out, so they're gonna have to get the sidewalk done.
My thought process was just leave them closer to the road, just stop it coming through. I sent it to Stephanie because at least it breaks it up on the road, the pathway can still stay there, and you could plow that.
Right.
But if we put them on the roadside, it'll stop the people who are driving in.
Well, we're letting the engineer, doing the engineering, because whenever we go up against them, and you've been there too, with just the cobblestone, you say you don't like the design, but then they say it's gonna work, and I just sit there, Chris, and say, their idea is to leave all the snow on the cobblestones, that's what they said, right?
Right.
All the snow. So they could be four feet high of snow, which is going to be a snowpack, and then plow on the sidewalk and plow the road, but then there's gonna be this four-foot-high wall of an ice chunk, okay, over time. And the cobblestones are supposed to let the water, once it starts raining out, when you have a, if you have a two-foot-high, a one-foot-high curb stop, that's what that snowbank is gonna be, and it's gonna like have water rushing down the road, and then rushing down the sidewalk, because, I don't know, I have snowbanks on my driveway, and when it starts getting to April, I start taking a metal shovel and start cracking into that and throwing it into the...
We do it on our own roads already, on the Killington Road, we break away.
Right, yeah.
But...
So the highway guys are just asking, saying, hey, listen, we're not gonna make the promise that it's gonna be open like Rosie gets this opened up here. Rosie's out there in the middle of a snowstorm, keeping that section open.
I don't, I don't think it has to be opened up during the middle of a snowstorm, but I think we do need to make sure it does get opened up the next day, otherwise, we're just putting people right back out onto the road again, which was, our intention was to have a walkway there.
Yep. Just go back to the highway guys and see how it'll finow.
Yeah.
What the plan is to take it further, what their idea routinely is.
Right, yeah, we're not gonna forget it, we're just letting everybody know that, especially until we get a routine and have it figured out.
While we're on highways, who is supposed to be maintaining the light, the timers now on the road?
It's Peter.
We'll get Peter to look at them, they're not going on the lights again, they're up all the way to the road.
Yeah.
Just be thinking of it.
Could be because of the...
It's just a time, it's a time, a time change.
It's a time change.
That's all.
That it for manager's report?
Yep.
Any other business?
Are we any further with getting our speed things up?
Let's go to the police department.
Yes, yep, I spoke to Abby, highway guys were busy doing projects, so she reached out to a contractor, so Fury agreed to come up, and he's gonna assist putting the, those up.
That's great.
You don't, do not need electrician because they're all solar.
Yeah.
So I think we're meeting this week, actually, to at least start them.
Great. Hey, Patrick, you're hanging in there, do you have any comments underneath other public comment?
Mine is something like you guys may have talked about again, I was just wondering what the timeline for paying the roads were, because, like you alluded to, the weather is bold.
We, they said they were gonna be in here today, because Tom Murkowski called me on Friday telling me that they're coming back in this week to start cleaning everything up, and he said Monday they should be in striping, and then today it was raining all the time, but...
Yeah, today's not the day. Okay, cool.
When we have this conversation tomorrow in this meeting, it's gonna be more of like, especially since we need that white line there for the snow, like five feet off.
You need that white line there to know where to drive.
Yeah, but also for the plow guys, and then I reckon absolutely cobblestones or whatever.
You know, people turning into the other lane, or treating it as a turn lane instead of a, the opposite direction.
And the other thing that I just realized on it the other day was, is that we always had, we started doing about six years ago, we had a rumble strip going up the middle of the, the road to separate the uphill traffic from the downhill.
Yeah.
So if you kind of weaved over, when there were no white lines in the, in the middle, you remember that, that you would at least hit the boom, 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 and get over. So that was like the last six years, the rumble, rumble stop?
About that.
So, we'll go from there. You got anything else in the back? Executive session, what do we got? Real estate?
Real estate, contracts.
And legal?
Yep.
Okay, so we're not gonna come out and...
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so can I get a motion to go into executive session at seven fourteen for real estate, contracts, and legal?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.